You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the August 12, 2025 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and remain standing as you're able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is by Denise Whitmer. "The First Day of School." A new school year means new beginnings, new adventures, new friendships, and new challenges. The slate is clean and anything can happen, and I'm wishing everyone a fantastic school year. We will now have a moment of silence, and this will be in remembrance of a student from Caleb's Creek Elementary School, a student from Carver High School, and a student from Glenn High School.
Did I hear some good frickin' news? I'm sorry to interrupt you. I know you're working, but that was the best news I've heard in like three weeks.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written? So I have a motion by Board Member Barr. I have a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next, we are going to move on to special recognitions. Alexis McCoy, our Athletics Director, will present the Spring 2025 NCHSA Champions.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Ms. Moore, members of the board. We're here tonight to celebrate our 2025 Spring North Carolina High School Athletic Association State Champions, all of which were in track and field. First, from Carver High School, Dedrick Reed Jr. He was a state champion in the 300-meter hurdles and the long jump. Also, Dedrick was a part of the 4x400 relay with Chase Ivy, Jaden Hughes, and Antonio Samuels. The Carver Track Coaches are Yolanda Shepherd-Reed, La Chanel Ennis, and Omega Walker. From Reagan High School, we have Che Johnson. He placed first in the 110-meter hurdles. He is coached by Richard Burton. Also, we had from Atkins High School, who's not with us tonight, Madison Davis, who got first place in the discus and shot put. One more round of applause for these wonderful athletes. And anyone in the stands supporting them, please stand up.
Next, Ashley McCormick, the Director of Personalized Learning and Instruction, will present the ISTE, which stands for International Society for Technology and Education Certification Recognitions.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board Members, and Superintendent Moore. Tonight, I'm extremely honored to recognize two outstanding educators who have achieved a very remarkable milestone in their careers. They are now ISTE-certified educators. This distinction is not simply about a badge or a certification. It really represents months of rigorous, reflective, and intentional work on their part. And so I would like to welcome to the stage Yanawi Quinones. She is an academic coach at Walker Town High School and Lisa Creed, Media Coordinator at Moore Magnet Elementary School. So while they're finishing up, I will say, these ladies have put in quite a bit of work. Over 40 hours of synchronous learning and asynchronous learning and the curation of a professional portfolio. Their work aligns beautifully with our district's commitment to deeper learning and portrait of a graduate. And so we appreciate all the hard work they've put in. If there are any friends, family, or colleagues that have supported them along their way, if you'll please stand. Thank you.
We are moving on to our public comments section. Do we have any speakers? Oh, excuse me. Superintendent's update. I apologize.
Thank you. I don't think it's that. Yeah, that one. Yes. So, no surprise to anyone, tomorrow is the first day of school. And like everyone else, I will lay out my clothes, be anxious before I go to bed, and wake up early and be on time for my first school visit. That's what we all do on the first day of school. Congratulations to all who are going back, our students. I wish you an exceptional school year. As normal for the beginning of the school year, a couple of items on transportation. We've done a lot of work over the summer to route a lot of students and get some bus stops assigned. We've made some changes with transportation when we eliminated the choice routes. So there's been a lot of work to sort of level set and redo, making sure that our kids have stops assigned to them as they are getting picked up. If there are questions about transportation, there's a website there that you can click, and it's on our district website as well, so that parents can get information. Do want to provide a little update, we had a number of students in kindergarten, 6th, and 9th grade. These are transition years that were not assigned a bus. This has to do with the transition from power school to infinite campus. And so they weren't caught in that rollover. So we've got a few kids that we're finding out as parents are contacting us that were not assigned routes. So we're working diligently to get all of them assigned, not just the ones caught up in the glitch, but everyone who requested a stop by May 30. Please continue to check the transportation portal to make sure and see if your student has been assigned a stop. First days of school are always, whether it's carpool or buses, it's going to take a couple of weeks to sort of get settled in. We are going to provide boarding passes as soon as we know, if we've not assigned a stop yet. But if your student does not have an assigned stop or a boarding pass, the family does need to find a way to get the child to school, and then hopefully we can get the boarding pass while they're in there so they can get home. A little show and tell on the next item. You would have noticed this evening, I believe, we used our Open Gate system for entry into the meeting this evening. We actually started using Open Gate last year in our high schools and a few middle schools. Through some grants that we have received, we now have provided every high school with a permanent Open Gate to have on their campus. And all middle schools either have one or share one, and they have directions for how to use those on a regular basis, both as the main entry point to the school and even using them in some classroom situations, in and out of classrooms, all as part of the comprehensive plan to support and maintain safe campuses in our schools. The Open Gate technology is a little bit, it's like a walkthrough, like traditional metal detection. And I think that the positive feedback that we've gotten so far is important. These are portable, they are lighter, they can be moved very easily. And so they will go into use right away. And I thought it might be fun to see how it worked here this evening so that you could experience what our kids and staff will be experiencing at school as well. There is a clear bag policy for athletic events, and we have two middle schools that are requiring clear book bags as a pilot, Middle Springs Middle School and Paisley Middle School. We do have a few changes to our cell phone policy we want to make sure that our folks are aware of. We did adopt a policy in 2024 that restricted students' use of cell phones. And in our current policy, wireless communication devices are not permitted to be visible or in use during classes or other instructional times unless authorized by a teacher for emergencies or other educational reasons. But the General Assembly passed House Bill 959 this past season, which now prohibits students from using, displaying, or having a wireless communication device turned on during instructional time. So the piece in the past that unless authorized by a teacher, no longer applies. It's not allowed. So this is new, under the recent law, House Bill 959 that was passed. It applies to the same wireless communication devices that are already covered in our local policy, but it does include laptops, tablets, paging devices, and two-way radios for those messaging capacities and things that are on those. And then, closing, just a word on district initiatives. The priorities for this year has been shared with staff and broadly in the community. There are three main areas that we are focusing our work on this year in schools. The first one is deeper learning, and this initiative is really being spearheaded through our PLTs with high-quality lessons, ensuring that we are looking at the qualities and the durable skills that are in our portrait of a graduate, using data to support our vision for learning and teaching. Second area of focus is inclusionary practices, ensuring that we're aligning our values with our daily practices to support all students and expanding our professional learning through the UDL, the Universal Design for Learning, and how we plan for our lessons. The third area of emphasis in the district is the Code of Character and Student Support. Code of Character, Conduct, and Support, and it changes the words. This is about consistent expectations, consequences across schools, and emphasis on restorative practices, positive behavior supports, and prevention strategies to ensure that our classrooms are positive learning environments that support all learners. Couple of additional things here. The cell phone policy comes back up as well in this area, to make sure that we are following those rules in the classroom, minimizing distractions. And then the rides, bus expectations, respect, integrity, discipline, excellence, and safety. Providing emphasis in those areas as well. I will say about the Code of Character, Conduct, and Support that I also think that that is an area where I have talked to staff about how we gather ongoing feedback around that, because I think there's some room for how we support our schools and build common understanding around that in our classrooms. And then, one last piece of good news, as a part of our initiatives in the district, our participation as a district in advanced placement exams. These are exams that our high school students can take after they enroll in an AP course in our schools and receive potentially college credit if they score high enough on that test. Generally, the scores that you need to have in order to pass, so to speak, and receive college credit are 3, 4, or 5, depending on the test. Our participation is up. So in '23, '24, 6,200 kids took AP exams. In '24, '25, it was 6,820. That's an increase of almost 600 students, additional students that took AP exams. And our pass rates were up as well, 72% in '23, '24, and 80% in '24, '25. This is work that we want to see. We want to see more students accessing the rigorous content of our advanced placement courses and students passing at a higher level and potentially receiving college credit that reduces the cost of college for them. So really a good news item. Congratulations to all of those students. That concludes my superintendent's update.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we're going to hear public comments on the agenda items only. The protocols we have in place for public comments are to ensure orderly and efficient board meetings. Pursuant to the District Civility Policy 1170, the Board does not tolerate disorderly conduct or disorderly or disrespectful behavior. Please direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. We cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak. If you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. When you come to the podium, please state your name and agenda item you would like to speak on. Our first speaker tonight is Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the Board, Ms. Moore. Came here to talk about the budget and the search. And then a bomb got dropped. I saw an email that's gone out to staff that says there will be more cuts. So I'll drop another bomb. The same person, the same people who told me when Mrs. McManus was saying that the budget deficit was 24 million, I was told that it was 40 million. That proved to be correct. I have now been told that deficit is north of 70 million. To address the search, I've already expressed my concerns about using the North Carolina School Boards Association. The last superintendent they brought us stayed less than nine months. I'm going to read from an article called FOIA, FOIA spelled F-O-I-A as in Freedom of Information Act. These types of search firms are common. School, Exec Connect, Hazard Young, BWP and Associates, Ray and Associates. There's an entire cottage industry of search firms. Note, the firms have an associates in their name. Those associates are mostly active and retired superintendents working on the side to do networking. The average search firm costs a district $15,000 to $20,000. It is hard not to look, and this is from Illinois, but it could easily be Winston-Salem Forsyth. It is hard not to look at this and see an old boys' club helping politically connected friends on behalf of Illinois children. For a district as interested in equity as we are, I cannot imagine or condone such systems. Closed network recruiting are classic gatekeepers. When it comes to hiring, even one of the top anti-racist recruiting tips is ditch referral-based hiring. Perhaps those rules don't apply to the powerful and well-connected. So while you all have not, at least as late as the last time I looked at the agenda, revealed who the nine are that you're considering, I wish you would, because this was sent to me by people who read my Facebook page and share my concern for the lack of transparency in the way we do business. And that lack of transparency cost us $70 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Easter.
Good evening. Usually I bring the righteous anger. Tonight, I've been super emotional. Many of you know that I serve as President of FCAE, our Public School Staff Union. But above all else, I am a teacher in this district. And so I speak to you tonight, not only as a union leader, but as an educator deeply concerned for the people of our district. I think about the transportation staff who are already struggling just to keep the lights on and provide groceries for their families, all while facing ongoing pay challenges and raises serious questions about whether their jobs can sustain them. I think about the many cafeteria workers who are scheduled just shy of full-time hours year after year, consistently unable to access full-time health benefits. I think about the mechanics tasked with the vital responsibility of ensuring our buses are safe for our children, yet too often lack the parts and tools necessary to do their jobs effectively. I think about the instructional assistants, stretched thin and asked to perform licensed teacher duties without compensation or preparation for the role that that demands. I think about the office staff juggling multiple responsibilities from answering calls and calming students and managing emergencies. All in a day's work to keep our schools running. And I think about the many other dedicated staff I can't name tonight whose commitment is being pushed to the breaking point. Despite these challenges, our staff show up, and will show up tomorrow, doing less, doing more with less, and often with a smile because they love our students. But our love alone cannot replace the resources and support that our students actually deserve. As union president, I will continue to encourage and support our members and staff across the district to communicate with them, advocate for their protection, and stand beside them. But it is your role, each member of this board, to advocate as well, using every opportunity in meetings, in the media, and in the community, to not simply just explain our losses, but to fight actively to prevent them in the first place. That means coming together to finally build and pass a strong unified legislative agenda that you will stand behind. And that means publicly, with one voice, urge the County Commission and Forsyth Republican Delegation to provide the funding that our schools so desperately need. Can I have just a moment? Their refusal in providing the necessary funding that affects tens of thousands of their constituents is a decision with real consequences. And our district deserves leaders who will demand more from those controlling the purse strings. They deserve a board that will not only prepare for challenges, but take proactive steps to address and overcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Morley.
Thank you, Chairman Kaplan, the School Board. My name's Harry Morley. I'm an exceptional children's teacher at Spee's Elementary. It's been a long time. I've been around for a long time. I'm here for you. I'm a fighter for education too. But I want to thank you first off for making the ask of the county commissioners for the funding that the third-largest employer, Forsyth County, has to offer needed, even though they refused to help us at this point and said no. I want to thank you guys for making that ask, because we depend on you guys to do that. I also want to thank you for writing the letter for our NC legislators and making an ask, even though they refused to help the third-largest employer in Forsyth County again. And they had, you know, the rainy day fund of $3.5 billion doing nothing but collecting interest. And the head of the Appropriations Committee said no. Now, I hope the people of Forsyth County, remember, the same people who said no are the same people who raised the voucher level and raised the voucher funding, which costs $18 million in this district alone. And I hope the people of Forsyth County remember that these are the same people who have underfunded public education right here in Forsyth County and the state, and they refuse to fully fund the Leandro decision, which is another, like, what, $100 million for us? I mean, we're only asking for 50 million. So you'd think they'd be happy to give that to us to save jobs. Like I said, there are bus drivers, there are like maintenance people, social workers, exceptional children's teachers, teachers, people in the cafeteria, the people in the front office. They are supporting you guys. You guys got to keep on making the ask to these people, because you deserve this money. It should be given to you. It should have been given a long time ago. So I encourage you guys to keep on fighting for it, because I don't know what else to do. And it's important. And like I said, my name's Harry Morley. I'm also running for 10th Congressional US House. But I'm here. I'm here for us. And thank you for doing what you're doing. Do it more. Thank you.
Thank you. Hattie Gillenwater.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Kaplan, and good evening to all of you. I know this is not an easy time. Sounds like it's going to get a little harder. Three quick things. One, I think that we really do need to hear the status of the CFO search, because I can't find any mention of it anywhere in any meetings for months and months. So I think we deserve, as a community, to know what's going on there. There's a lot of concern about the school safety for our children and the cutbacks that y'all are making there. I did find out that in Wake County, the municipalities paid those costs for the SROs and the crosswalk guides. So I think it's time we maybe talk to the city about that, and of course, the other municipalities. And then, I was going to ask about the 48 million, which was the last number I'd heard until we just heard 70 million. We really still don't have a good sense of what comprises that number. And I hope that doesn't mean that y'all don't know what comprises it, but I think we all need to understand what makes up that number. Thank you.
Thank you. Jalisa Smallwood, excuse me.
Hi. Thanks so much for having me. So my name is Jalisa Smallwood. I am just a product of the school system, a daughter of a school bus driver, and I used to be a governmental auditor. So I remember literally sitting, I used to sit in those fancy cushy chairs and come read the board meeting minutes of the city, the school board, whomever I was assigned to audit. Typically, single audit, just to dive a little more into that special niche that I was in for at least seven years. And to reference something that was mentioned earlier, the slate is not wiped clean with governmental financials and fund balance. That's how we ended up in this problem, I think. And just, again, as everyone else has kind of already mentioned, the articles, the audit reports, and the corrective action plans from the single audit report just don't line up. I looked at a few of them while I was standing out in the lobby, and from what I recall, it said no major internal control deficiencies. And I think we got some internal control deficiencies. Excuse my improper English. But just looking over everything, again, the math is not mathing, things are not aligning. And like previous lady just said, there has really been no explanation for certain things. I heard payroll, which is a significantly audited area, from what I recall, and/or should be, considering how much money is spent on payroll. should be, considering how much money is spent on payroll. And just the simple fact that a lot of bullet points in responsibilities and requirements of roles like yourselves, like people who, you know, oversee finances for the school board, it says, excuse me, I think I wrote it down somewhere, or specifically the CFO role specifically said, pre-audit certificate rules, audits accounts of employees collecting or receiving taxes, and it also referenced communications within internal audit role for compliance and internal controls. Are those things happening? The corrective action plan from the previous CFO, how are those things being addressed? Because I remember being on the inside, and it was just fluff, for lack of better words. The corrective action plan, fluff. All the findings, they repeat year after year. So where's the actual corrective action? And while I may not, at this moment, have all of the requirements for the role, I am not certified by the NC School Finance Officer of, by Department of Public Instruction, but I will be doing so, so that I can submit my resume for the position. Thanks.
Thank you. Jen Gallagher?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, and superintendent. We all agree that our students with exceptional needs absolutely deserve and require these critical services: speech therapy, sign language interpreting, nursing, orientation, and mobility support, and more. These services are not optional. They're mandated by law and essential for students to access their education safely and meaningfully. However, I want to raise an important perspective as you consider this contract renewal and the shift to a consolidated provider model. These expensive, multimillion-dollar contracts would not be necessary if our exceptional children's department had not lost so many of our experienced staff and directors, many of whom who have left to work at the Department of Public Instruction due to extreme demands and a lack of meaningful support from leadership. This exodus has left us relying heavily on third-party agencies to fill the critical gaps, excuse me, in staffing. While the total contract amount remains unchanged from what you approved in June, I urge you to use this opportunity not just to approve the contracts, but to demand accountability and a proactive plan from our Human Resources Department. We need a clear, concrete recruitment and retention strategy for hiring qualified speech-language pathologists, nurses, interpreters, and other specialists. Our students' needs are too urgent and too complex to be outsourced indefinitely. We must build and maintain a stable internal workforce capable of providing these services. I respectfully ask, alongside your approval of this contract adjustment, you require HR to present a detailed plan showing how they will recruit, hire, and retain these professionals, so that we are not perpetually dependent on costly contracts to meet legal obligations and the needs of our children. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mitchell Daub?
Good evening. My name is Mitchell Daub. I'm a citizen of Forsyth County. And like most of us, I've been following with interest and great concern about our budget woes. I've got a copy of what I'm going to state. What's the best way to get this to you? As a board member of several boards during my lifetime, I've had the opportunity to overcome great obstacles. And if it's one thing I've learned as a board member, is that the larger the obstacle, the greater outside-the-box thinking that you have to have. So I set my mind down to achieve the following goal. My goal is to help, through the community, raise ten million dollars for us to apply towards the budget deficit that we would find ourselves in. And I set three parameters: no job cuts, no service cuts, and no tax increases. So how are we going to do this? Well, this is outside-the-box, so please know that. Part one, a goal of two million one hundred thousand dollars to be raised by the naming rights of the twenty-one schools in Forsyth County who are not currently named after an individual. If you look under part one, we have twenty-one schools that are either named to a direction or to a location. I would recommend that we sell the naming rights to those schools at one hundred thousand dollars per school. That would raise two million one hundred thousand dollars. Possible, first person I talked to would be Chris Paul. And ask Chris, Chris, would you like to rename West Forsyth High School after yourself or after your grandfather Nathaniel Jones? And I'm sure Chris would be open to this possibility. Part two, classroom sponsorships. I don't know how many classrooms there are in Forsyth County, but if there's an average of fifty, and there's eighty-one schools, if we would sell sponsorships to each classroom, you have a plaque with a person's picture on that plaque and their name, this classroom is in honor of, sell those for a thousand dollars, we could raise four million fifty thousand dollars. I volunteer to sponsor the first classroom. I'd like to sponsor the band room at Reagan High School in memory of my son Nicholas Daub. Part three, you can, the school system already conducts fifty-fifty raffles at most football and basketball games. I've looked into it. From what I can tell, the school system can raise up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a fifty-fifty raffle on each occurrence. So my proposal is that we do thirty-one recurring raffles. At each time a raffle is won, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars goes to the winner, the other hundred and twenty-five thousand goes to the school board to retire debt. We do this thirty-one straight times, we've raised three million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Part four, how are we going to pay for all this? I recommend-
You can continue.
I recommend that we hire five sales representatives to implement these programs, to sell the naming rights, to sell the sponsorship rights, and to sell the fifty-fifty raffle. We paid their salaries a total of five hundred thousand dollars for the five reps. We have to have three hundred thousand dollars to change the signs on the schools, and we have to have thirty-five thousand dollars to afford the plaques. The way we do that, all eighty-one schools will pick one athletic institution, be it a gymnasium, a baseball field, or a football field, sell those naming rights for ten thousand dollars each. Eighty-one schools at ten thousand dollars would be eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, which would pay for the program itself. That leaves a net of ten million dollars we could use immediately or over the next year or two to pay down the debt. Any questions?
We can't communicate back and forth, but I appreciate this, and we will reach out. Thank you very much for your constructive thinking. Our last speaker is Ron DeMaze.
Wow, how do I follow that? That is some out-of-the-box thinking. Great. As what was already stated, my name is Ron DeMaze, and I'm here speaking this evening as an individual. Greetings, Chair Kaplan, the board, and interim Superintendent Moore. This evening, I want to address this body concerning the budget. These last months have been a roller coaster for our students, educators at every level, and the community. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is one of the largest employers in this county and one of the largest school districts in this state. Being a former educator in this district, I remember when we stood proud to be in this district. Lately, that is not the case. This budget deficit has resulted in some staff and vendors not being paid at all or delay in payment. Staff being reduced from bus drivers, cafeteria workers, central office, school-based staff, staff in this district sitting on pins and needles, wondering when they will get the call that they no longer have a job. My questions are, what are you, as the board, doing to retain the students who are currently in this district and increase the student body district-wide? With the decrease in the number of students comes the decrease in the funding that we receive here in this district. And there is an increase in the funding that the district has to pay to private schools for vouchers, because that's where the students are going. What is the plan for making this district whole again? The school closure discussions, are those for this school year or next? Because in the community, we're confused, because we keep hearing different things. We need to be more clear, even down to the clear-bag policy. You don't know how many people contacted me, and I contacted some people on this board to get some clarification, because I did not want to give out misinformation. We have to be clear with the messaging that's going out. As you already heard from the gentleman who spoke, the community is here. The community wants to support this district. This district is vital. This district is important. People love this district. But we can no longer be kept in the dark, and we can no longer be told one thing on a Tuesday and a different thing on a Monday. We have to do what's best for students. I get that. But we also have to make certain your staff is whole as well. And being told that staff can't contact the board, that should never happen. They're voting constituents. You are elected by them. They should be able to contact you if they so choose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have, order please. We have five items tonight for discussion. First, Dion Jenkins, our chief legal counsel, will lead us in the superintendent's search firm discussion.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan.
Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent Moore, members of the board. I will be very brief. I just have for you a few slides that summarizes the results of your superintendent's search scoring process. Just to remind everybody kind of where we are as far as our timeline, the board, although was not legally required, did decide to go through an RFP process to select the search firm that will lead the next superintendent's search. There were nine submissions for the board's consideration. The board has taken the last week and a couple of days to review those, and you've submitted your scores to me anonymously. I have for you a summary of the submissions I've received, as well as the points that they all received. Each one had a maximum of up to a hundred points per response. And so I've given you kind of a total points, as well as an average score. As you will see, though, for both ways of analyzing this, the North Carolina School Board Association came out up front and received the most points in the scoring process. And so I do want to just let you know, I don't, there's not an action item currently on the agenda tonight, but with this information, if the board is inclined to amend the agenda, there is a draft consulting agreement that is in your materials that was also a part of their RF pre-submissions, so you've had an opportunity to review that. But I did want to make you aware of that as well.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins, so I'm looking at the number of responses. It looks like not every board member responded.
Yes, that's correct.
So in the calculation, is the total amount of points, is that inclusive? So there were eight responses to the North Carolina School Boards Association. Is the total points inclusive of that additional entry?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess is that, then, and this is not a, maybe not a you question, might be a board question, is that fair? I mean, like, if, like, I see two of the entries got seven, the rest got six, and then one got eight. If we're just using the total, it seems a little uneven, no?
It is. And unfortunately, because the scores were submitted anonymously, with the exception of one situation, I was able to decipher where some duplicates entered, and so I was not able to discern that from the other entries. And so even if you were to reduce that to a seven, I think, I can't do the statistics in my mind, but I think they're far enough advanced that they would probably still be the front runner.
Yeah, we're discussing. Yes, Board Member Kuhn.
I have several issues with using the North Carolina School Board Association. One, I do have an issue with our last superintendent that came through the North Carolina School Board Association. However, I personally believe that it is just not a good look that our chair sits on the executive committee for the North Carolina School Board Association. So I have a problem with that, as our firm, using them.
I have a-
Yes.
I have a concern that all of our board members did not feel that this was necessary to take a look at. And not to step on anybody's toes, and perhaps I'm still going to do it anyway, but I just think that that's why we were elected, and this is one of those things that's really important. And I feel that, at this point, I don't feel comfortable agreeing to this, because everybody did not participate, but that's me.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Watts?
I'm hearing my colleagues say that, what solutions would you have as we move forward? Because again, we have to act promptly on this, and I hear your concerns, I see the numbers, and I do hear, value your concerns raised, but how do we move forward and to expedite the process so we can begin to move forward?
Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither?
I do understand, because we are really under a deadline. As far as I'm concerned, we're kind of behind the eight ball. You know, clearly, our interim superintendent has said, November thirtieth is our last day. And so I don't think we're going to get a lot of stuff done by November thirtieth. And I do think that at least what we should have is a recommendation of who we want to hire. I can't even imagine that person will start by November thirtieth. I would think it would be in the new year. So I, my recommendation is resubmit, give us three days. And let me preface this conversation by saying, I am a procrastinator, and I do wait to the last minute, and maybe a little day or two after the last minute, but I will stick to it and get it done.
Board Member Miller?
I think it's unfortunate that everybody didn't participate in this, but I also think we should have stated that before we entered into this and said, if we don't have a hundred percent, we won't use the information that we received. And we never talked about that. So to me, it is what it is. These are the people that participated. I did. I don't know about the rest of you, but to me, it should stand, because we did not, we did not set a ground rule for that.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
So to kind of, I guess, parse kind of what I hear from both Board Member Brown Gaither and Board Member Miller, I do, I believe because of the timeline, we, to kind of go back and kind of re-score is not the best use of our time. However, my concern is, although I am, I'm disappointed that we didn't have full participation, I'm less concerned about that than I am about how skewed the numbers are in terms of the total points. I think we're, because this is sort of the way I look at it. If, like, one person could have, and I'm just saying could have, you don't know what's in people's heads, but if I had a preference for one over the other, I might submit scores for one and none of the other ones. And so that inherently will increase the total amount of points for one particular submission or not. So to me, I feel like, instead of going based off of just these numbers, because it's clearly not fair, maybe the best thing to do would be to take the top, maybe the top three, and then interview with those individuals, so that we get a better understanding about what they can do, kind of have an additional layer of kind of assessment, and then decide how to move forward based off of that, as opposed to just based off of the information in front of us, because I feel like it's skewed and quite frankly, not fair. But, and I also feel like conducting interviews might give us a better understanding and more comfortability about who to go with, and if that ends up being the North Carolina School Boards Association, then it is. But if it ends up being, you know, one of the other top contenders, then that's where we need to go. And I think that we can, we can schedule those relatively quickly and make sure to get those done, and perhaps we can have a, we can have a final decision as soon as possible. I think that's a good compromise.
Board Member Kuhn, and then Board Member Watts.
I like the idea of a compromise and maybe looking at the top three. I will say that I called references on a lot, almost all of these. Not every- Not everybody that I called got back to me. But there were concerns with the North Carolina School Board Association, with the board members that I did speak with. They had concerns about feeling that they were pushed into who they chose. They did not feel that it went deeper than surface level, that the school board association pushes back against the board with some of the choices. There were some choices that were pushed on them that thankfully did not work out because it ended up being a disaster in another state. And I asked the question of all the board members I talked to, to, from these different firms, would they pause if their chair was associated with one of the search form, firms? And all of them said yes.
Board member Watts?
So, uh, Vice Chair Bohannon, I, I, I do like what you're saying, but wondering, is there also possibility to take the top three and go back and have all nine of us rank them again to kind of see where we stand in the top three? And then based on that, could we then begin to interview that number one, number two, and number three in that order to try to save some time?
That's a good idea.
I, I'd be amenable to that. I think, I think just as long as, if we can have, at least for those who are present, I think what might be good along with that is if we all verbally commit to doing that.
Well, let me ask, I mean, I trust our school attorney. I would be happy to say, let us identify our survey to the school attorney, so she can be, so she can be sure that all nine voted. And if we do not get nine by a deadline, have her to reach out to that board member and say, hey, where are you? I need your numbers.
It can be modified to include the email address or the...
Yeah, but I'm saying, but still, we can make sure that we're all held accountable to making sure we're turning in our results.
So if, is that something, Deion, that you can do? You can modify the setting so that this time you can see who submitted?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the top three would be the school board association, and then I'm seeing Summit and McPherson. Are, are we, are we all good with the three, with just the top three?
And then how much time would you like to have to return those?
Friday, by Friday.
Friday? Okay.
Yeah.
Five o'clock.
P.M.
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 Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks so much. Next, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our chief financial officer, will discuss the MOA with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and Winston-Salem Symphony Partnership.
Chief academic officer. Thank you, members of the board. That's okay. That's okay. It was just a, and Superintendent Moore, thank you all for the opportunity to provide this update around the annual partnership for Winston-Salem Symphony with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. This is a longstanding partnership that is about investing in the arts with our students through opportunities for performance for our fourth and fifth graders, as well as after-school opportunities to engage. So as an overview of the partnership, it's the Mary Starling In-School Ensemble and Concert Series, the Youth Orchestra, and then the Play Series that we introduced last year that we would like to continue forward for after-school programs. So our Mary Starling Concert Series is for our fourth and fifth graders, that they have two performances, that they get an opportunity to visit Reynolds Auditorium and to see orchestra in action. And the fifth grader stu- students have a full symphony orchestra concert at Reynolds Auditorium. This is done in February each year. Our youth orchestra program begins with students having an opportunity to experience string orchestra through some musicians that have the least experience going through full symphony orchestra with the most experienced student musicians. Of course, exposure and opportunity, access and opportunity for students that we want all of our students to be able to have, and to be able to provide that for every fourth and fifth grade student in our district. I think it's a great partnership. We want to continue. I know we ask about this annual partnership each year, and one of the conversations that we've had between operations and instruction is how can we begin to think about a multi-year agreement that we submit this partnership because the community also subsidizes this partnership beyond what the school system is able to afford in a contribution. And then the Play Music Program provides enrichment opportunities through after-school programming. It assists with thinking about homework support, alignment to our durable school skills and our portrait, as well as having a curriculum that is developed by experienced musicians specializing in strings and percussion provided by the Winston-Salem Symphony. So these are the current schools that are participants in the Play Music After-School Enrichment Opportunities. I know there were conversations around which schools received each opportunity, which was based on student interest. I, I remember that question from last year. And so our proposal for this year is, the goal is to continue that partnership for the access for the fourth and fifth grade opportunities with our existing performances, as well as the continuation of the Play Program and celebrating that partnership. And just to note, the price value of what I understand, that partnership is over $75,000. And the Winston-Salem Symphony fundraises to help to subsidize and offset that cost for us. And each year, they ask us for, what are we able to do? And this was our local investment that we were able to secure, has been pre-audited through our finance team and included in our local budget for this year. And I just want to thank the Winston-Salem Symphony representatives for their ongoing partnership and just working with us. Are there any questions?
Okay, board member Kuhn, excuse me, board member Brown Gaither? Miller, and then Kuhn.
I just want to say, I want to thank you, because last year, you all heard me when I, I made the point that I wanted to make sure the Cook could get the strings because they only had percussion. And they are right down the street from Paisley where they had to do all the practices and things like that. So I want to thank you for adding that to the Cook School. And the only other thing I would love to see us do is the concert dates. We need to add at least one concert at night at Cook because all of them were daytime.
Okay.
And that's for those parents that worked.
All right. We will work. Look, you have, you have shared that information directly. We will work towards that. Thank you.
Board member Miller, and then board member Kuhn.
Yes, I've attended many of these Mary Starling concerts with my third graders, and they are outstanding, very high quality. I wouldn't like for you to clarify, if you could, exactly, you said that these four schools were chosen by student interest.
No, the, the type of instrument access by student interest.
So how were these four schools chosen?
So I don't, if you want to, this is Rachel Watson, and Rachel, thank you so much for joining us. She is one of the partners for the Winston-Salem Symphony.
I can answer that. Hello, school board. Thanks for having me. So there are several different programs going on. The Mary Starling Concert Series goes to, it's every fourth and fifth grader in our district. The in-school ensemble is in the fall of every year. We send out to those schools. In this, in February of every year, every fifth grader at every elementary school gets to attend the concert at Reynolds. Yes. And then I was going to say, the Play Program is the program that we, over, gosh, the past five or six years, have developed relationships with the principals that were there. I know there's been some turnover, but we are working, the Symphony is working to establish those new relationships with them to keep the partnership going, because we are invested in this, in this children and the families of those schools. And so we just like to keep it going. And so it started off as a partnership with the principal, or with a relationship with the principal.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. Then board member Kuhn.
So if it's because they had an existing partnership with the principal, if I'm a principal and I want my school to be able to participate in play, do they just contact you? Is that how they do it, and you will select them then as a school?
We start with, you know, educating the principal and the faculty as well on what our program is, what it's about, what our goals are. And then, of course, funding is the biggest option. So as of now, Play Music has one funder, anonymous funder, that funds the entire program, very passionate about the students in the district, and we'd love to see it expand, but it does take a little bit of time to, to get to that point.
Okay. So I guess my next question is, do the principals know about this? Do all the principals know about it, and all they have to do is reach out to you? I just want to make sure that every school has an opportunity to do this if they're interested in it. And do they know that?
Okay.
I don't mean to be hard on you. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this.
No. So for the Play Program specifically, it was around access and expansion in some different schools. We have not broadly offered this opportunity just because that was a donor-sponsored opportunity. I'm sure as we seek expansion and think about possible donors, that's something we can consider, but has not been something at this moment.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a curiosity question. With the after-school, I recognize that they're, they're, they land at each of those schools. However, is there an opportunity, if there was a budding violinist at another school, to join in with a program at Cook, or if it was closer to the house that digs, or wherever it may be? Is that an opportunity for students?
I think that's something we, we definitely want to consider in giving students access because aspirationally, they're more close in age to several artists possibly. So something I definitely think we could build on. It's a great idea. Other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, Dr. Wilkins will lead us through the EC contracts discussion.
So I just want to revisit that in June of this summer, I think it was June 24th to be exact, we had conversations around a consolidated contract for EC itinerant and related services. The goal of that contract was to begin to streamline the providers within the district and to think about how we could begin to think about services and support in a way that were not only streamlined, but support our students. Since then, one of the things that we talked about as a district, because we were working on a consolidated contract, was that upon approval, they would be able to reach out to our existing vendors for participation. And since then, that has occurred, and some vendors did decline participation. And with that, we want to continue to maintain continuity and support for our students for EC-related and itinerant services, for our SLP services, sign language, nursing, and orientation and mobility. One thing I want to note is the cost of the contract does not change. What is important to note is that because some service providers declined, we must individually contract with providers. I also want to note, because as we've discussed with our budget considerations, with the state budget not currently being approved, we are working with providers to initially start our contract at a reduced right, uh, price on the original hole. So we are not currently contracting for, starting the contract for the entire purchase price. We are starting the purchase order at 50% of the price, as we have done with many of the contracts within the district. And so we are working towards that because we are waiting on a final approved budget by our state legislature. We want to make sure that we have uninterrupted services for students. As a reminder, school begins tomorrow. And so a part of this was making sure that we could come back with this contract that does not change the overall initial price that was requested, but ensure that we can contract individually with the providers that we are requesting. And so as of note, and I just want to give some context, since we shared the board materials on last week. So since this contract, because we have students that move into our district as recently as yesterday, we had an additional one-on-one service support request, but we also had some other changes in services. So just to note, with that service change, that does not change the overall price of the contract, it does increase the number of students. So instead of 21 here, we have 22. And so I'll give you a rundown of the overall contracted between sunburst and with individual contracts. Six for speech-language pathologists, one for SLP assistants, and we can provide this in email as well, so you have this update. Three sign language interpreters, one for orientation and mobility specialists, and 20 nursing through individual contracts. We need 6.25 speech-language pathologists, two SLP assistants, eight sign language interpreters, one physician order for Medicaid billing through a doctor, one state contract for services for the blind, and three nurses. So I just say this to show you that the needs do adjust, and sometimes when we are possibly a student is moving out and a student is moving in, we have transitions with the number of services. And so this is our current service demand, with the only change of now needing 22 for nursing services, as mentioned just a moment ago. And so the request, as you will see, the original request for sunburst was 4.597 million. That has reduced to a total of 2.8 million roughly for services, and you will see the other services being requested by individual service providers. And so our recommendation, and you have the links already to those contracts, as you've been able to review for the individuals, is that we get the approved additional contracts with no addition to the overall total amount for EC-related and itinerant services.
Yes, first board member Kuhn, and then vice chair Bohannon.
I just want to say that this was my very concern with doing this to begin with, is that when we were doing this, we were going to end up not having all the providers go over, and we were going to be in this predicament. So there's no issue with me knowing that we need the services. I just wish maybe we could think through some things and understand that not everybody is going to jump on board to a great idea that we think is great. And maybe we wouldn't be here now if we had thought differently.
Can I respond? Point well taken, and one of the things that we've talked about is can we have an earlier period of interest for a provider, so when we come to the board, we have a better idea of those who will be individual contracts, even if we possibly continue forward with a consolidated contract moving forward? I think that's work that the staff and our team needs to do, and we're committed to working on that.
Thanks. Vice chair Bohannon?
Do we know? I, I see that there are, if, like, I'd like to understand, like, how many did go under sunburst versus did not? Like, do we have that?
We do. Can we send you that total in email? We'll work on sending it by tomorrow morning.
Um, if that's something that, do other board members think that that would be helpful? Um, I don't want to be the, you know, I don't want you to have to do the work, and, you know, it'd be just for me, but I...
Thank you, vice chair.
And the reason why I, the reason why I think that's helpful is because I, I thought that one of the reasons why we did this in the first place is because, is because it made staff's job a little bit easier to not have to be the administrator for all of these different contracts. So to me, I feel like the purp, it's still met, like, the purpose is still kind of met because even though it's not all of them, it still is a lot of them.
A good majority.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And even so, since then, we've had a few more to come on to sunburst, like Steppingstone just joined sunburst, so we have a few more that have still now come on too as well. So yes, it is less individual than it was before.
Any other questions?
It's not a question, but I'm just, I'm struggling with the amounts. I really am. And here we are, and I know there's a need for our services and our young people, but I'm just struggling with this amount for the contract, to be honest. No question, just a comment.
So since we're in this... Yeah, since we're in discussion, board member Watts, is it the, like, the cost, or like, is it that we feel like, you feel like it's not, what, help? Could you help? I just want to understand kind of where you're headed, like, what you're thinking.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to deal with this current contract and knowing where we are with our deficit, one. And two, is there any other way that we could have avoided some of the lack of services that are now coming on board?
So the only way to adjust and decrease this contract is to have more internal staff available to provide these services. available to provide these services. And so I believe earlier there was a conversation around how can we recruit more staff and make that a focus? I think that's an intentional piece and a teaming piece that we can do with HR and our recruitment team to think about strategies and successful opportunities. I will say that many districts that I know of across the state and the nation, they have to do contracted services because of the limited personnel with the expertise and credentials.
Yes, Board Member Brown-Gather.
I just want to know, what happens if the board does not approve this? I, I need to know what's on the other side of this.
So I'm going to ask the school attorney to help. I just want to say, the board has already approved the amount. What we are asking for are the additional providers so that we can provide the full total services that we already requested initially. But I'm going to ask-
Go ahead.
If, sorry, waiting for that. If, if we're, if the board does not approve the contracts, the services still must be provided to those students. And if we do not have providers for those students, then we run issues with FAB and other things in the EC world unfortunately that the board's familiar with. And so we, we don't really have an option to provide these services. If we don't get it from these providers, we'd have to search from other providers if we don't have the personnel on staff to provide these services.
Any other questions?
Yep. So I want to go back because I, I think this is an important point and so, because we've talked about this, at least for years, just since I've joined the board, about us not having the providers for these services and that this is a sort of not just a us thing, but it's kind of across the board. Would it be fair to say that what, so just looking at this screen, like, sign language interpreters, speech-language pathologists, nurses, like, working for the district, if you worked for the district full-time, what we pay you or what the state says that we have to pay you is less than what you could make if you were in the private sector? Is that fair?
That is correct.
So, because I think that, a lot of times the question is always about, like, what we're doing or what we're not doing. And I think that there certainly are opportunities to grow in terms of reaching out, those kinds of things. But if we're nowhere near competitive in terms of what people could earn outside or even working for a contract, like, if you still want to stay within working with kids, but you want to, you know, you'll work for a contractor because they'll pay you more, we still are, like, that still puts us at a disadvantage. So I think, to me, and this is more of a long-term conversation, not necessarily just for this item, but i- if we don't approve the contract, like, we don't really have another option because it's not like we're going to just hire, find people to just hire for these services in the interim because school starts tomorrow. So I, I don't really see at this point kind of what the, that we have an alternative. And I don't want to put, I don't want to put people in a, in a situation where they have to be scrambling even more than they already are, given our current circumstances.
Okay. Board Member Kuhn and then Board Member Watts.
And this, again, may not be something everybody wants, but I'd like to ask if my fellow board members would be interested in this. I would love to know how maybe some of our neighboring counties handle some of these services because I know we've had conversations in the past about recruitment and other neighboring counties have been able to dip into other funds, billing, Medicaid billing funds, those kind of things, for bonuses, for recruitment bonuses, those kind of things. That was something that I'd asked the CFO about several times. It was supposed to be looked into. I would just, I would love to see how other districts recruit and what tools they have used and what their numbers look like comparison. It may not be like a, it may be for future planning, not for anything to happen right now, but just as, to think through numbers and how we recruit and retain.
Definitely something I think we could look into. That's the request of the board. Two comments that I would make is, one, pay and compensation for us benefits are, I think, a huge enticing piece for the school district. However, in private practice, they can provide higher pay with no benefits. And for many, that is also enticing. And so it's, it's one of those trade-offs that we work through and think about that in recruitment. I will also say two things that I know of personally from talking with some other districts. When there were funds available for temporary relief dollars, there were recruitment bonuses that were provided by other districts. I also know some licensing fees have been paid by various groups as well. And so I think we can continue to look at those as, as options as we become more enticing to attract great talent in our district.
Thank you for saying that because that's exactly where I was going because I think sometimes we just have a conversation with certain people who are, who are in the practice. Say, hey, you know, you are a speech pathologist in private practice. How can we recruit you into Forsyth County? Or we, you are a quote, sign language interpreter in private practice. How can we recruit you? And maybe, I don't know if we can, but I think we need to have those general conversations with people to say, hey, they're talking about licensing, they're talking about testing, they're talking about ways to, you know, maybe, maybe there are critical ways we can think outside the box to meet those needs. And I think if we can have those honest conversations with some people in professions, we might get, we might be at a better place down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, Dr. Chris Weichert, our Chief Human Resource Officer, will discuss the budget amendment and transfer number one.
Before Dr. Weichert comes up, I just wanted to put a pin on a couple of requests that came up during the last, the last item. We had one request for, for some information at some point, and we could talk more about that at some other point, around what other districts are doing around recruitment tools or maybe even ratios for in-house to contract and that sort of thing. So by not of head, is that information that board members would be interested in receiving? Okay. And then the second one was a breakout of who is with sunburst and who we're individually contracting with, just to see what that breakout looks at. Yes? Thank you very much.
Good evening. So I stand before you to discuss our first budget amendment of the season for fiscal year '26. Just as a reminder, we are currently operating on an interim budget, still waiting for the state to make some decisions in Raleigh. So the first amendment here is a local amendment. As you guys know, we approved the interim budget for a general operating budget of something just a little north of $176 million, not including the capital outlay dollars the county gives us. So this first one is actually a, what I would call a precursor to the superintendent's budget update and a future action item later tonight. So I'm not going to go too in detail with it because I don't want to steal the superintendent's thunder of discussing this. But what we're looking at on this amendment, all right, if it's a contingent on the approval later tonight and then the county commissioners' approval, when this budget amendment is voted on at the next meeting, this would go forth. If for some odd reason neither, either vote wouldn't go through, it would be removed. Does that make sense? It's contingent, it's two contingencies. All right, it's a bad real estate deal in that way. So this right here basically says this. We're county, the, we currently pay the sheriff's department and the nurses, they, they give us money for the sheriff's department services and the nurses of the county, and then we turn around and pay them back. So if that's approved and the superintendent goes a little more detailed, we're just going to ask the county to keep those dollars and pay them, you know, pay them directly. This is contingent, as I said earlier, on the action item later and the county commissioners' vote. The next amendment is dollars coming from the federal government in PRC 17. That is our continuing, excuse me, our career technical education. We get these monies every year. The monies haven't been allotted, have been allotted around a little over $1.1 million. So our recommendation is that we accept those dollars and use them for some salaries, but you can see there's a lot of purchased services, supplies. This is for CTE improvement. Our third one here is this is our year five, this is our other restricted fund, all right, our Wallace Foundation grant. You can see here that we've actually started this work for four years. This has been improving our teacher pipeline, principal pipeline, and other initiatives around equity-driven career pathways. We have an allotment of a little over $1 million that we recommend the board accept and put into the budget. As you look through the transfers, the first one is local. Once again, this is the contingency one on approvals. You'll see here on state, we don't have any amendments yet. We have received some amendments from DPI, but honestly, they've come in and then they've set, recently due to the mini-bill that they passed, there's more coming. So we're consolidating all those for next month. Otherwise, you would literally have pluses and minuses as we work through this continuing budget. I'm going to be a real optimist and think they will have a budget at some point, but that is optimism. Your third one is the federal grant. This is just us putting money from PRC 17. And your last one here is your Wallace grant money is being recognized. I'm ready, I would answer, ask, I'll answer any question I'm able.
Yes, Board Member Kuhn and then Board Member Watts.
I noticed on Wallace grant, I know that we're winding down. At one point, we used to get position money for positions. I see that that's not there any longer in this transfer. So does that mean that those positions are, have been dissolved through the ending of the Wallace grant or have they shifted on dollars? What are we doing with them?
I, I know my two years here, we haven't had any monies for positions. I'm going to ask Dr. Barnes-Jones to, if you're willing, chair to answer that question.
Hello. We were only able to provide monies toward physicians in the first two years. That physician went away, that person retired, and we are no longer able to put any funding toward physicians. Last year, we would have been able to do about 30%. In our final year, we can't do any, so no funding can be for physicians.
So are we are, how do we reapply and what's the process? Or can we reapply?
Well-
Because the projects, initiatives are very, are vital and have been very beneficial to our district. I mean, so since this is our last year, what are the next steps in securing the grant, if possible?
So this is our fifth year, but I can tell you that we have been granted a sixth year. So we will have that. As of right now, the Wallace Foundation has not put out that they will be doing this initiative again. Should it come around again, we would apply again, but as of right now, that it's not in the works.
So we only hired one physician with the Wallace grant? I thought we hired a number of people-
No.
-under, or to do the Wallace grant work, maybe, is-
No, the Wallace grant work is being done by me and my team. No, there's no additional positions that the Wallace grant is paying for. No.
So, sorry, I did, I did have, just for context, I just, so your current team is, did, is not comprised of individuals ju- just came on from Wallace? Like, there, we had, like, leadership development people already in place or positions in place, right? Like, or where did the, your, your department that you are in charge of now, like, that's been here in some iteration, right?
Kind of. So yes and no. So initially, it was being led by who was at one point our Chief Human Resource Officer. Because she became the Chief Human Resource Officer, she moved someone else into that position. So yes, it was in place and now it's kind of shifted to not being in HR, but just being under me.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. So next, Catty Moore, our interim superintendent, will give us a budget update.
Tonight's update will be divided into a couple of parts, like our other updates have been, one, the first part will be focusing on the '24-'25 budget deficit and the second part will be focused on '25-'26. So starting with the '24-'25 budget deficit update. So when we say our overall budget is approximately 46, deficit is about 46 million for fiscal year '24-'25, I want to take a moment, again, based on the continued questions, to kind of explain that number. So 16.1 of that number is funds that we owe three vendors, ESS, SSC, and Forsyth County. That's 16.1 bills that we owe. Another, and this is actually in this, on this slide, is the 11.3, three now, to the 16.1 that I did, three now, to the 16.1 that I just mentioned a moment ago. The board also authorized in a couple of meetings ago, the use of child nutrition fund balance to support the debt from the prior year. The board approved up to $6 million to be used for that purpose. At this point, we have accessed $2 million from child nutrition. We, we may need to access more, but we've accessed $2 million at this point. So that is debt that we owe because we have to pay that back to child nutrition. So you add that to the 16.1, the 11.3, and now an additional two for child nutrition. That amount is 29.4 of the 46.1 that we've been talking about. The remaining dollars are dollars that are associated with our capital fund balance and our grants fund balance. Those are technically dollars that we owe ourselves because we used funds in other areas to meet operational obligations. And then the number that was mentioned earlier in terms of being higher, which is where I'm headed in a few minutes, I also mentioned at our last board meeting that we have a deficit or a budget reduction from DPI of around $5 million, where they are giving us fewer resources than what they told us in the spring, based on how they do their calculations and based on the status of the budget. There is also a reduction of $8 million in federal carryover. We have $8 million less in our federal funds. That is a result of having to use more of our funds last year. And then something else that I don't think we've, we've talked about is the, the board approved a fund balance transfer of $5 million late in the year. That $5 million is dollars that we spent, that we have to not spend this year and account for. So when you start adding those amounts together, that's where you're getting into somewhere between 60 to 65. So accounting for the fund balance appropriation that was used for expenses last year, as well as the changes in the DPI carryover, as well as the changes in the federal carryover, are adding to that 46. Hope that makes sense. I've practiced that on a few people to make sure that it made sense to, in layman's terms, to folks, so. All right. And, and the other thing that is, that I need to say about this amount that we owe ourselves from capital and grant funds that were appropriated for other purposes, we won't actually have that number detailed and defined until we see, receive our audit report in the fall. That is an estimate. So want to start there. And some of that information I've just talked about here, so you've seen most of this before, three big vendor payments. I've talked about who those are. The 11.3 is new, that's why I highlighted, highlighted it's down from 13.7. Couple of additional newer updates and some of this information I presented at the county commissioner meeting yesterday, last week, in a letter from the state superintendent and deputy state superintendent. The state informed us they were providing a grace period until September 20th, 2025 to pay the 11.3 and communicated that they will impose the interest penalty as of that day if, for whatever amount is not paid. I do anticipate that our board, board chair, will send a request to the state board of education to appeal that decision from the state superintendent and deputy state superintendent. And the board does, the state board of education does have a process for that appeal, where a panel of the board will hear the request and make a recommendation to the full board, the full state board. And then the last, just talked about this a bit as well, yesterday I did provide an update to the county commissioners. It was my second visit with them. My first visit and this visit were all really tied to the requests that we are making of them to provide flexibility and additional funding in the amount of 8.5 million that would be used directly for last year's debt. And so the art, the focus of yesterday's meeting was the Article 46 information that I had not gotten to in the previous meeting when I met with them. So met yesterday, I believe they're planning to vote on the 8.5 million on Thursday. Couple of additional items, we did send a letter to the local delegation. Several members of the delegation responded, expressed concern over the timing of the letter, given the House- House and Senate schedules, and/or a desire to review the pending investigative audit report from OSA, and were not inclined or able to, at this time, provide any funds. We do, however, have been in contact with that local delegation with the follow-up, and are planning on a date to meet in September. Has that date been established, Chair Kaplan? Is it the 20th of September?
It is the 22nd.
22nd. So we've got a date where we will be meeting with the legislative delegation. And, you know, that is, their last response was a little more open to having a continued discussion about a legislative process that could provide an opportunity for support to be provided for the debt from last year. That is what that request is about, to pay the debt that we accrued in 24-25. And then, just as the last update, this is, this has not changed since the last time I talked. We are still in communication with the IRS. They are reconciling all the documents that we've given to them, and we don't have any more updates beyond that at this time. I threw in a couple of options here around, this, this slide is about options, how we could perhaps gain some funds, where the district could support how we might pay back some of the debt from last year. These are one-time type dollars. These are not recurring dollars. This is for the debt from last year. We could look at some central office furloughs that would be enacted, that require some collaboration with our attorney and legal, and making sure on how we would do that. One day of a central office furlough is approximately $200,000. There are lots of ways you could slice this if you wanted to raise, you know, recoup some funds this way for that debt. It could be done by bands, based on salary in terms of the number of days. The contemplation there would be that lower staff salaries and central services would have fewer furlough days, and higher-paid salaried staff in central services might have more furlough days. No decision on this, something to think about. The second option is freezing the local supplement, meaning no annual increase this year. It does not take away from the existing supplement that staff is, is getting based on their years of experience, but it means that if you're moving from year five to six, and you would see an additional X amount of dollars, that you would stay at the year that you were the year before. What this looks like when you operationalize it is, year one or year zero become the same for year zero and year one, right? So the supplement becomes the same, and then it starts moving. If we were to freeze the local supplement, no annual increase, and this is just the local supplement, that's about $375,000 per year. And then, another supplement longevity payment that the district engages in is local longevity for classified staff. That is a fairly recent thing that the board has done, to provide classified staff with a longevity payment based on years of service. That total amount is about $2 million for the district. I'm not looking at proposing eliminating that, but if we were to freeze that such that, and I think it's based on every three years of service. So if we were to freeze that, so that a person might be moving from like three to four, or that sort of thing, that would be about $100,000 per year. I think it's important to look at options for how we could begin to make some changes, to recoup some funds, where we are actively looking at how we are paying our debt from the year before. These are not large amounts. The amount that we owe is a large amount. And I, I think part of the message here is, we don't really have the capacity to do much within our existing budget to repay the amount that we owe for last year. And I, and I can't imagine many of these would be palatable to most folks, so. There they are. No decision. One additional note on fiscal accountability, and that is, the highlighted part at the bottom, we do expect the release of the Office of State Auditor's investigative audit findings soon. I do believe that report should be coming out. It could be this week, next week, but it should be soon. And I think there are a lot of people that are interested in what it has to say, what recommendations it makes, and how we as a district respond to that. So now I want to turn to, to this current school year, 25-26, and where we are in terms of our budget for this year. So, in July, we opened Tyler for departments and school staff. We've talked about this a little bit already. We released local funds to departments and schools at 50% to 100%. And the reason I'm bringing this up again is because obviously, as school, as started, we have gotten some messages from teachers and folks in buildings, who are hearing messages from their building leaders, that the allotment of supply dollars that has been provided to schools for the opening of the school year is 50%. The intent is to release the other 50% later in the year, so long as funds are available. But we needed to not release, because these are not dollars that are all spent in August immediately. It is a visi- a fiscally sort of conservative approach to the release of the funds. The intent is to release them, but we've got to make sure that we have the funds. And so I think how that message has been conveyed at the 81 schools and the various departments that we have, obviously varies. We ask our principals to lead and shepherd their staff and their buildings through these types of changes. And we have a myriad of ways that this has been communicated. We have some building leaders who have taken a very conservative approach to what they're providing their teachers at the beginning of the school year versus last year. We have other building leaders who are not as conservative in their approach to how they are messaging to their teachers, what funds may be available for the different kinds of supplies and the things that they put here. And the supply dollars include, it could include post-it notes, markers, it includes paper, it includes their copy budget. All of those things are what's in that supply budget. So I just wanted to acknowledge the questions that we have received about this, and explain how it's being implemented. And it, and this was across, it's not just schools, it's central services as well. State funds for non-instructional needs were released at 50%. So there is a budget out there that shows, let's say, a million dollars in a particular area. But what was released for departments to use was 50% of that, which would be $500,000. Again, until we have a finalized budget, and we have all the reductions in place that they might be making to us, we wanted to be conservative in our approach. And again, this is understanding that not all bills come due for the entire year in July and August. They are, over the course of the school year, are paid. So Hill has, was contracted, again, one of the areas that we asked them to work with us on was to review our budgets, local, state, federal funding sources, personnel funding, allotments, non-personnel funding and obligations, to ensure that we were working towards a balanced budget for this school year. Hill has provided observations and recommendations for the 25-26 budget for right now. That document is in, simply is one of several, three documents that Hill has provided. And the points that I will make in the following slides largely come from the Hill memo, recommendations and observations. The areas that Hill has recommended that we review and adjust for this school year: central office-based administration and staffing, school-based, non-instructional staffing, exceptional children's program ratios and staffing, district-funded dental insurance, and school administrative staffing. Of those areas, you see, obviously, that only one of them is not personnel-related, but impacts every person, right? The rest of the items are personnel-staffing related. In their observations summary, they start by indicating that our legacy manual processes make it very difficult to determine actual costs and salary projections. We are still using an older system for this. We will be transitioning to a new system, but because of that, when we're trying to figure out exactly how much we're spending on salary and personnel and benefits, it becomes a manual process in many cases. Historically, verifiable allotment formulas have not always been used for certified and non-certified staff, which results in overhiring without sufficient resources. We've talked about that some previously. As our enrollment has declined, we have not used formulas that commensurately show that we make adjustments down in our staffing, both in schools and in central services. In some cases, we've operated outside of formulas. In some cases, we've not followed the formulas. And in some cases, we didn't have a formula for a number of years. So all of those are the landscape of the last few years. And then, again, where there are observations, we have both active employees and retirees, some retirees, that receive free dental coverage, which costs the district about $2.5 million annually. I'm not sure where the, how we're doing the retirees, or who those are. That was new to me. But it is a service, apparently, that we are providing. A couple of additional observations. The staffing for the exceptional children's program significantly exceeds the NC State standards that are set, and staffing of comparable-sized districts. So, and, and, you know, we are cur-, it says, "We are currently supplementing exceptional children's programs by approximately $30 million in excess of available funding." I, I want to just stop for a moment here, and I, I guess I want to say this really about everything that we're talking about. As we get into a conversation about additional reductions, I don't want the perception on the presentation, or the decisions that loom before us, to be in any way associated with whether or not we need all of the people that we're going to have listed, and in different areas, and in the recommendations. I think as a district and in the state, we are in a difficult position regarding how our schools are funded, how personnel allocations are made, and how local districts are picking up a difference that is a state obligation. And so I have no problem with having all of the services that we're going to be talking about, if we can afford them. And, and that really is the crux of this. So, apologize for the rabbit hole. So, exceptional children. Next bullet. For the 25-26 school year, the state funds about 51 and a half 10-month assistant principals. Based on their funding formula, 51 and a half APs is what the state will fund. We employ 149 assistant principals, and all of them are employed on an 11- or 12-month contract. So the impact is much higher than the 149 in terms of months of employment, because what the state allot is in months of assuming 10-month positions. Next. Central office-based administration and staffing. So now we're looking at recommendations here. Hill recommends that the district review central services staffing, and consider obtaining an independent assessment to identify potential efficiencies in services provided. This is at the central office level. They have indicated that additional reductions should be made to central services support staff. This includes central service administration and central services instructional and non-instructional staff. So additional reductions at the central office. Hill recommends that additional reductions should be made to school-based support positions. So in this case, these are, they could be certified or not cert-, they're, they're not certified groups. These are not non-certified groups in schools. And they also indicate that while the reductions are necessary, non-certified employee support groups should be appropriately staffed to deliver quality service to both schools and the community. So that's the balance that you're finding in this. We need to make reductions, but we need to make sure that we are providing high-quality services. Those run a parallel path, and they, and everything that I talk about next seems to run contrary to that, but it is a belief that we hold around the work that we do. And, and yet, I need to talk to you about reductions. Next slide. For exceptional children's programs ratios and staffing, Hill recommends that the district consider, consider an independent review of our EC program staff and processes for identifying student. So this is both the resources we have, and the processes for identification, and how they are used. Hill stated that the current trajectory, our district cannot continue to sustain the level of staffing and funding without significant additional resources. Hill recommends that the district make reductions to the current fiscal year EC budget. Hill recommends also, for dental insurance, that the district consider employees begin paying their dental premiums, beginning with the new year, January 1, 2026. Dental premiums would then become a voluntary deduction offering, and would be deducted before tax. Most districts no longer offer employer-paid dental programs. There would be some parity there with how other districts are handling this as well. In, in, in other districts, we see the premiums that the employees are paying in the vicinity of $15 or so for the individual, higher obviously for family. This is, however, a cost that the district has covered, that would now be covered by employees. For school administrative staff, these is the assistant principals, Hill recommends that the district review the number of assistant principals and months of employment. He'll states that Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools exceeds the number of positions normally needed for the size of individual schools in a district. I'll talk about that in a mo-, moment. And Hill suggests reducing approximately 50 full-time equivalent assistant principals. I think, and this actually ties in well to the discussion we had earlier in buildings and grounds, our schools are, have a wide range in sizes. And if your philosophy is, every school should have, every school has a principal that is funded by the state, so long as we have at least 100 students or seven full-time staff. So that principal is paid for by the state. And then assistant principals are allocated on a formula. But if, if you believe that you really need a principal and an assistant principal at every school, our numbers don't support that school by school. Not even close. And so, hence the recommendation that we need to make reductions in the assistant principal formula. They are not reducing, they are not recommending a reduction that takes us just to the state allocation. We know that in all of these areas, we need to provide local funds to provide support for what the state is not providing in these areas. We just have to provide that local support within the budget that we have available. So we have some reductions that are needed for fiscal year 25-26, and the contributing factors, I've talked about these a little bit. The reduction of $5 million in state allotments that have been provided already, the reduction in the federal carryover of $8 million, the use of fund balance, which is at least $5 million from last year, if you add the other 15 that happened last year, but was for the previous year, that's even more, for fiscal year 24-25, that needs to be considered a reduction for this coming year. And then there are potential additional reductions to state allotments. The state is not done with all of their funding formulas and the adjustments that they need to make. We are not on the other side of our day 10 enrollment either, where we would need to make adjustments based on what happens for reconciliation also. So the recommended reduction, as we take a look at these numbers and where we are, is a minimum of $20 million for this year's budget, current school year. Our investment priorities, as we move forward here, we continue to remain committed to providing the highest level of core instruction we can for our students. It is our obligation. And, and I, you know, I am conflicted about delivering these messages, knowing the reductions that, that we're talking about. But this is our obligation and our duty. We must provide a well-rounded education. We must take care of the behavioral, mental health of our students and our staff. We have to focus on employee recruitment and retention, and we must be efficient in our operations. These are, these are all tied together. Some reduction analysis considerations. You'll hear me talk about providing a relative standard of support. When I am talking about a relative standards of support, what I am looking at is, what are our peer districts that are like-size doing with their funding, their local contribution to these areas that we're talking about, so that we can see how other districts are implementing, what their formulas are, what their local dollars are, and the services that they are providing. The, the relative standard of support just helps us understand where we can look to potentially make reductions. And I think that is what Hill has done as well, in terms of looking at where our dollars are committed, what that relative standard of support is, what the state formulas or recommendations are, what our local peer districts that are like-sized are doing as well. So the areas for reduction in the targeted amounts that we're talking about this evening. At central services, that's about $3 to $5 million. It would include reduced and eliminated positions, and it would be also looking at months of employment for current 11- or 12-month employees that could go down to 10 months. For school-based, non-instructional support, that reduction is $2 to $3 million. It is reducing school-based support staff, the remaining testing coordinators that are in schools, those- in schools, those, some schools don't have them anymore, and then months of employment, again, for 11- or 12-month, that would be reduced to 10 months. In EC program allotments, that is $9 to $11 million. That includes EC teachers and EC teaching assistants. The dental insurance program will provide about $1.3 million for this year, because we would not begin it until January. The following year, it would be more, around $2.5 million. And then for the assistant principal allotment, that reduction is $4 to $5 million. While Hill has talked about 50 overall reduction, what we're looking at to reach the number is 36 assistant principals, and then reduce 10 months of employment for all APs who are currently all hired at either 11 or 12. It is a best practice for most school-based positions and some central-based positions to hire at 10 months in the contract, and then to add that 11th or 12th based on funds available, as opposed to contracts at 11 or 12 months. So, that total is 23 to, 19.3 to 25.3. So, you see, it falls in that range of what we're talking about, around 20 million. So, the district recommendation will be for the board to implement a reduction in force. The reduction in force steps, as outlined in our policy, reorganization by attrition, reduction in force necessary due to declining enrollment, decreases in funding, insufficient funds to continue programs and staffing at current levels. A reduction in force does require formal board approval. The total positions that would be eliminated would be in the vicinity of 300 to 350. So, in terms of a timeline and next steps, we're going to want to gather questions from the board. I do want to develop some sort of an FAQ that explains this process and policy for our staff. I think there needs to be an effort on our part certainly to reach out prior to getting the notification that you are involved in this process. We do need to refine and finalize a recommendation to the board. I am going to ask the board to schedule a special-called meeting on August 19th for the board to consider implementing the RIF. So, before I get into certainly questions or comments that the board may have, I do have some additional comments and observations. I sent an email to staff earlier today around 4 o'clock. This is not news or a recommendation that anyone wants to deliver. But it is where we are and what I was hired to come here and look at and do. So, I am delivering a recommendation that gets us to where we need to be with our budget for it to be balanced for '25-'26. We are a people enterprise. 85% of our budget is salaries and benefits. Last year, we did about $56 million in non-personnel in local. We reduced it first to 46, and then reduced what we pushed out to 37. There's no more stuff left. It is utilities and required contracts, required resources. The dental insurance obviously is the only thing that's not people, but it impacts people. And I want to acknowledge that this is not just a transactional recommendation, although it will feel that way to everyone that is impacted by it. I acknowledge that this recommendation will impact lives, and it will change lives. It will cause uncertainty, anxiety, anger, a myriad of reactions, all valid. And yet, it is, when we look at the need, a fiscal need for the district, we cannot balance the budget without further reductions. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say, this is all very, very, very difficult. And I feel very confident that I speak for all members of this board when I say that we share your shock, your disappointment, your anger over this budget crisis. It has shaken every one of us to our core, because we care deeply about this district, our teachers, and the well-being and success of all of our students. I wanted, I want to tell you that we are committed to working through this extremely serious financial situation to course correct and restore the confidence of our district. Our interim superintendent has been incredible. It's been very, very difficult for her. She is going to continue to keep you informed with budget updates, as well as the difficult and necessary measures that we must take to resolve our debt and balance our budget, and put processes in place to ensure that this is never going to happen again. Looking back is very important for understanding and prevention, but we also need, we must move forward to resolve this so that we can get back to the priorities of helping our students receive the best education possible. Our community depends on this, and we are going to get through this, but this is a very, very difficult time. Yes, Board Member Watts?
No questions, just some statements. I've worked in this district for over 32 years as a teacher and administrator, and I've never seen it this bad, never. And some comments were made about how this district used to be a place where we wanted to work, and we had pride to work, and we came every day to do the work that was needed of us to do. But tonight, my heart is broken. I, I talk a lot about joy. There's very little joy in doing the work now in Forsyth County school systems. So, I'm at a place where physically, it's impacted my health, it's impacted my, quote, "mental being," my wellness, and it's also impacted just, do I want to get up tomorrow morning and do the work? But when I look back over what has made it work for me are the students and the parents, teachers, the cafeteria lady, the bus driver, the crossing guard. So, it hurts me, but I also have to lie on, at this point, all I have is my faith. And my faith tells me that weeping may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning. We're going to have to work through the night to get to the joy. And I hope everyone who has listened to me will understand, this is not something I want to do, care to do, but if we're ever going to correct the ship, we got to make some decisions. Today, I spent all day in a classroom, helping a teacher assemble his classroom for the new school year. My funds were used to support him, my time was used to support him, and I share with him, as long as he endures this journey, I'll support him. And I think as community and board members, we must stand together, fight the fight, fight the good fight. And if we fight the good fight, somebody said to me, "There's something better on the other side." We have to fight the good fight to get to the other side.
I don't have questions. I just have a statement, I guess, as well. I'm sick to my stomach over this. If anybody's paid attention to me over any amount of time, EC world, I fight hard. And I'm really angry that I've had to hear in multiple spaces and places, my favorite word, that we had too many people, we were working on it, we were going to re-change things, we were going to make sure people were in the right places, and now, nothing happened in the past couple of years, and now we're sitting here and we have to do it. So, I'm real frustrated. I'm really frustrated that there have been so many instances where staff has said that things need to happen, and they haven't apparently happened, and now our people are suffering.
Any more comments? Yes, Vice Chair, go ahead.
So, first of all, I think I did have a question or two, but I wanted to start by apologizing to our interim superintendent. And the reason why is because, because obviously, we're having to have tough conversations, and, and I know in your mind, you're like, "Why are you apologizing to me?" The reason why is because we asked you, this board hired you to do, to do, in my opinion, what should have been done over time but was not. Because, to your point, when you are in an organization that is comprised of overwhelming, like your budget is spent majority on people and benefits, to your point, you can only cut so much from non-personnel until you have to cut from personnel. And to be quite frank, you know, it, it, we, sometimes, we can push and try to kick the can down the road because we don't want to have the tough conversation. And, and we've sort of been operating from this place, this dichotomy of understanding. On the one hand, we all know, if you've been paying attention to public education, that there's not enough. We've been asking educators to do, to do more with less for decades. That's been the kind of common expectation. But the reality is that you still are confined by what your budget requires that you adhere to. If you spend over what your budget allotments, then you put yourself in a predicament, and that's where we are. We are now having to make these excruciatingly difficult decisions all at once, when perhaps, if we would have been more judicious, and if we would have had the proper if we would have had the, the proper, the board itself having the proper information to make the right decisions, and for us to have had staff in place who were able to provide oversight over these things. But we are now in this position, and we've asked you to step up and to take this job. When you were retired, you didn't have to do that, but you did anyway. And so, I want to say thank you, because we will have some, these next couple of weeks will be difficult. The first day of school will be tomorrow, as, as most of us are in schools visiting. This is, this is, this is beyond tough. I don't, I don't think there are words to describe kind of how we're feeling. I did want to ask, because you mentioned when you were talking about the kind of months of employees that a best practice is for assistant principals to kind of start at a 10-month and then have that flexibility, as opposed to having them be at 11-month or 12-month? Is that, when you say that's a best practice, is that industry best practice? Like, is that a common occurrence?
In school districts, yes. And it's, and it's because, so 10 months is the term of the school year. And then, generally, what you'll find is districts may provide, say, an additional, and a high school, if you have several APs, or you have counselors or other folks that you might need in the summer, the school might get an additional five months of employment that they can distribute to APs, or counselors, or other folks that might need to work some portion of the summer. But it is a fixed amount, and it is, the school administrator determines how to use it, based on what their needs are, but you can budget for that amount. And if for some reason, you need to reduce a budget, because those are only allocated on an annual basis and not guaranteed and not a part of the contract, you don't have to implement a, in a formal RIF process in order to change it.
And in this district, we don't, we have APs that are 10-month, 11-month, and 12-month?
That's correct.
That's correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Board Member Barr?
Yes, you know what? I would like to, like to say something. I think as a board, as we begin our search for our superintendent, that we are going to absolutely have to do it right and get it right. And because when you look over this entire issue, we've had an organizational failure, and sometimes, we don't want to admit the, the difficult thing or the hard thing, but we definitely had an organizational failure. And within that organizational failure, we had a communication failure. There was a failure of proper communication from superintendent to this board, from the superintendent to the CFO, from the CFO to his entire department. And so, you know, when we get ready to hire this next superintendent, we're really going to have to make sure we do it right, because just like some of you guys and in the audience, I came through this school system, I went through the four, what was the plan? It was 4222 Plan, Louisville, from Louisville, I think, to Diggs, from Diggs, to Griffith Junior High, from Griffith Junior High to, to Anderson, from Anderson to Parkland. And when I see the state of our community, it, it bothers me. And also, not only did I go through the school system as a student, but I also taught 14 years, more, Paisley, Kernersville Middle, and then my wife also taught, and then I have both kids, this is how committed I am to this community, both of my children, my son and my daughter, went through this school system. So, when I see this, this really impacts me. So, just for our board, the next superintendent that we get, the next CFO we, we, we hire, we're going to have to make sure we, we make our decisions completely from objectivity, get out of our emotions. We may like someone, we may think they're the greatest person since whatever, but we've got to look at this as a, as a business and as an organization, not from our, from our emotions.
Yes, Board Member Watts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up on a question and a point of order, if I may. Back at the top of discussion items, we discussed the superintendent search firm discussion. Did we just have a, just have a discussion, or did we make a decision? I guess I'm asking, did we take a vote? Was there a motion, or did we take a vote on the way we're going to proceed there? And if, if we did, or if we didn't, what do we need to do now?
I think through our discussion, there wasn't a action item on this, on this particular board meeting, but through the discussion with the different board members, we, we, I think, most of us most of us agree that we would spend another week looking at the top three of the choices and ranking them again, and then possibly having an interview with them, but to do it as quickly as possible. Do you have some feelings about that?
Well, I'm tempted to make a motion that we accept the results of this report, but I'm, I think it would probably, probably be a waste of my time and yours. But I think it's, I think it's important that we proceed with all due diligence as quickly as possible.
I agree, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for our interim?
If I could make a couple of additional comments. First, thank you, Mr. Watts, for Psalm 35. Very much appreciated. I just, I made a, I wanted to make sure that I was clear also, I mentioned this earlier. This recommend, these recommendations that we've presented to you this evening do not involve any direct ADM reductions to classroom teachers, like K-5 teachers, content area teachers, that sort of thing. We are, we will engage in the reconciliation process on those resources in September after the 10-day count. And it just didn't make sense to look at doing something now and then doing something again possibly in September. We'll wait until the September numbers are in for enrollment and make any adjustments there based on the formulas that we currently have. Should the board desire, or it be evidenced that we need to look at those formulas, that would be something you should do in the next budget cycle prior to the next set of allotments going out, which will be around next February. You'd want to study it between September and December possibly, and have a recommendation that would come to you if we need to make any changes. But I just want to make clear that this is, these sets of recommendations do not involve any of the regular classroom teachers that are part of the ADM allotment that we get from the state, that are class-sized formulas that you see in different areas.
Okay, thank you very much. We are moving on to our consent agenda items. We have, we have two items to consider. First, consider approval of the general personnel report. And next, consider approval of the July 8, 2025 special called board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. No, you don't have to have a second on consent agenda. Our next order of business is action items. We have two items to consider tonight. First, consider approval of the EC contracts. Do I have a motion? Second? So I have a motion by Board Member Wood, I have a second by Board Member Miller. Any further discussion?
Want to go on record, this pains me. It really does also hurt. But I know if we don't do it for the children and for the students, we're going to be in more trouble. But I just want to state that, that this one also hurts.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the quest, request to the county commissioners to amend the local fund allocation. Move to approve. So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, I have a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that motion passes unanimously as well. Our next meeting of the Board of Education will be a special called meeting on August 19th, and then on August 26th will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. So before we begin our public comment, let me say to our viewers on Cable 2, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.